Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of Allegheny County Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer or reflection. Thank you. Please be seated. The chair and please take roll.
Mr. Bekowski, here. Mr. Ponnerati, here. Mr. DiMarco, here. Ms. Filiagi.
Unknown participant is now joining.
Understood. Mr. Grisbeck, here. Ms. Hallam, here. Mr. Klein, here. Mr. Macy, here. Ms. Nakaradi Chapkus, here. Mr. Paul Mary, here. Mr. Paul Messina, here. Ms. Pritsio, here. Mr. Walton, here. President Katina, here. As of right now, we have 14 members present.
Proclamation slash certificates, 13270-24.
A proclamation recognizing K-9 Ranger and Deputy Jeffrey Bellback, sponsored by Councilmember DiMarco and Councilmember Paul Messina.
Folks, many of you know that our Sheriff's Department goes above and beyond to keep the residents of Allegheny County safe. And I think they do a phenomenal job. But it's not just our two-legged deputies that do a phenomenal job. It's also our four-legged deputies. Recently, they were in the news for helping to save or find and potentially save the life of a 65-year-old woman with dementia that had wandered off. And so I'm very pleased, along with Councilman Bob Paul Messina, to be here tonight to present this proclamation to Deputy Jeffrey Bellback and to his K-9 Ranger, who's not able to be with us right tonight. Whereas Allegheny County Council is proud to recognize and honor those distinguished officers who devote themselves to public service demonstrating great courage and diligence in providing for the care and welfare of the citizens of our great county. And Deputy Jeffrey Bellback, an 11-year veteran, joined the Sheriff's Office in July of 2013, serving in the Courts Division until he was transferred in March 2015 to the Transportation Division. Soon thereafter, he was transferred to the Ritz Division, where he welcomed his now beloved partner, K-9 Ranger. Deputy Bellback and the Sheriff's Office welcomed the 10-week-old bloodhound Ranger as a single-purpose tracking dog utilized for tracking individuals and other investigative techniques. Deputy Bellback began specialized training in the summer of 2015 and began patrols that September. For nearly a decade, Deputy Bellback and Ranger have been invaluable to the Sheriff's Office, the local community, and the nation. And whereas in August 2024, after undergoing treatment for hard palate melanoma and taking a five-month hiatus for surgery and recovery, Ranger returned to active duty. Neither the cancer or the treatments have impacted his tracking skills and desire to work. Ranger's abilities were on full display less than two weeks later when he used his tracking skills to locate an individual wanted for a bank robbery in Carnegie. And most recently, the eight-year-old bloodhound and his handler, Deputy Bellback, helped locate a 65-year-old woman with dementia who had wandered away from a personal care facility in O'Hara Township on October 9, 2024. Using a blanket from the woman's room at the personal care home, Ranger was able to identify her scent and tracked her for nearly three miles. Whereas after an initial sighting of the woman on Harts Run Road, Ranger's nose led him and Deputy Bellback down the middle of busy Harts Run in Dorceville Roads, which were closed to traffic. Ranger stopped at Glenn David Drive to rest and to allow traffic to resume. Police from O'Hara, Indiana Township, and Fox Chapel continued on the tracking path and found the woman a short distance away on Fox Hall Drive. She was not injured and was transported back to the facility. Now therefore be resolved that we, Allegheny County Councilmembers Sam DiMarco and Bob Paul Messina, do hereby honor Deputy Jeffrey Bellback and K-9 Ranger for unselflessly devoting their lives to the preservation of order and the protection of others. And we praise their commitment and dedication. And witness thereof, we have hereuntofore caused the Seal of the County of Allegheny to be affixed this 22nd day of October 2024.
Thank you.
Council and everybody, I really appreciate this. This means a lot. Ranger has been a very invaluable asset to our office. As far as his breed in law enforcement, you don't see a lot of it. So having one here in the county is very, it's very, it's very good to have him able to help out in these instances where only he could do the things that he does. No other items or resource in law enforcement can replace the end of the nose of a bloodhound for certain things. So I appreciate this and thank you all.
Unknown participant is now joining.
Hello, everyone. Again, I want to say thanks for recognizing Ranger and Jeff. They're invaluable to this police agency as well as our county. So I just want to really quickly say thank you and we really, really appreciate it. Thanks.
Pictures, don't run off, guys. We've got to go get a picture.
That's a proclamation commending the actions of Mark McCullough and Senator Devlin Robinson in saving a delivery driver's life who collapsed while working, sponsored by Councilmembers DiMarco, Filiagi, Katina, and Paul Messina.
Mark McCullough.
Nice to meet you, Mark. Folks, we have been inundated with campaign commercials for it seems like the entire year. And you have, they're all saying politicians are going to fight for you. They're going to do this, they're going to do that. Rarely do we hear from someone saying that I actually saved someone's life. Okay? And that's what we have here today. I'm honored to be here today with Mark McCullough, Senator Devlin Robinson, and the gentleman here, the FedEx driver, who was actually the person that they saved. So without further ado, I'll go right into the presentation. Allegheny County is always grateful for the contributions of those who make a difference in the lives of others. As a Bridgeville homeowner, Mark McCullough and his state senator neighbor, Devlin Robinson, quickly jumped into action and performed lifesaving measures after FedEx driver Adonis Whitmer collapsed in Mark's front yard while dropping off a package on June 13, 2024. Senator Robinson had a series of delays in his schedule that turned his day upside down when he pulled into his driveway to stop home on a whim. Mr. McCullough, an IT specialist for PPG Industries, also wasn't supposed to be home. But because he was waiting for a contractor to show up, he was working from home that day. It was Mr. McCullough's dog's persistent barking at the FedEx driver at his front door while he was trying to participate in a work conference call that drew his attention outside. And Mr. Whitmer was in the process of delivering a sectional couch to Mr. McCullough, who came out to ask him how many more packages he had left to deliver, which Mr. Whitmer turned around to answer him and then collapsed. As Mr. McCullough rushed towards Mr. Whitmer, Senator Robinson dropped everything and ran across the street after he saw two legs sticking out from underneath his neighbor. Senator Robinson gave Mr. Whitmer a sternum rub, and that's when he took a breath while Mr. McCullough was on the phone with the 9/11 dispatcher. Both Mr. McCullough and Senator Robinson performed chest compressions and worked to maintain the man's pulse until paramedics arrived. Whether it was divine intervention or happenstance that all three men were in the same place at the same time, the circumstances ultimately led to saving Mr. Whitmer's life when he collapsed while unloading a package from his truck, suffering from cardiac arrest. Mr. Whitmer has worked as a delivery man for 13 years and is expected to have a long recovery ahead of him following the cardiac arrest. So now fore, better be resolved that we, Allegheny County Councilmembers Sam DiMarco, Suzanne Filiagi, Patrick Katina, and Bob Paul Messina, do hereby honor Mark McCullough and Senator Devlin Robinson for the heroic actions that saved Adonis Whitmer's life on June 13, 2024. And we are very grateful to them for all of their efforts, not only for their actions on this particular day, but on each and every day throughout the year. And witness thereof, we have hereuntofore caused the Seal of the County of Allegheny to be affixed this 22nd day of October 2024. Well, this is completely unexpected. Devlin reached out and said, hey, can you come down to the county building? You know, I work downtown, you know, part some days now. And so it wasn't a inconvenience or anything, but I didn't really expect all the show. Glad I could do what I could do. I got nothing more to say, really. It's hopefully people can learn from this, become more trained, myself included, and hopefully we could save more lives. You know, I now have two new friends and yeah.
Yes, all right.
You know, as Sam said in the proclamation, none of us were actually supposed to be there that day. Adonis actually wasn't supposed to be delivering on that route. That wasn't his usual route. But the first truck that takes that route was filled up that day and he took the secondary truck. So, you know, Mark wasn't supposed to be home at the time and I wasn't supposed to be home at the time. So it just really goes to show you that things happen for a reason. And we're really happy that everything worked out. And as Mark alluded to, we have all become a lot better friends. And I'm going to teach Adonis how to golf one of these days because I brought him the top golf. It wasn't, it wasn't working too well. But that's, that's one. Thank you.
All right. Well, my turn now. Yeah, I'm the FedEx driver that had that milk emergency. I'm quite the celebrity now, too. But one thing I'm sure is like, hey, I just thank God that I'm still here. And these two guardian angels that was there, had happened to been there. If they weren't there then, well, I probably wouldn't have been here. But on a good note, doctors were pretty impressed how I pretty much bounced back two days later.
A proclamation recognizing the Allegheny County Airport Authority's 25th anniversary,
And then I just woke up at St. Clair Hospital like, why am I here? And after running a bunch of tests on me, they just say, well, everything came back positive. We just don't know why you fell out. I mean, they say might have been a virus or whatever. But all I
sponsored by Councilmember Bekowski and all other members of council.
know is God's in control of my life, your lives, my two guardian angels' lives, everybody's
13272-24.
A proclamation recognizing Dr. Lola M. Thorpe's dedication to serving and improving
lives. So just want to say thank you to Devlin and Mark for being there for me. Thank you.
the quality of life in Allegheny County, sponsored by Councilmember Walton.
13273-24.
A proclamation recognizing the dormition of the Theotokos Greek Orthodox Church upon the momentous occasion of their 100th anniversary, sponsored by Councilmember Fatoulas.
13274-24.
A proclamation recognizing and congratulating Jacob McKelvey on achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, sponsored by Councilmember Macy.
We'll now have public comment on agenda items.
We have several. First up is Richard Ford.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Richard Ford. I live at 333 Halcombe Avenue, Clarton, Pennsylvania. Last week, I was awakened from my sleep and when the TV was on and they were talking about the monies that the county needed for raising the taxes. And one of the suggestions made was that they use the clean air money to use some of this. I am here before you to ask you, please do not use that money for that effect. That money, in my opinion, should go to the people who are most affected by that air. That air has destroyed many things and hurt many families. My particular family, my grandmother, my father, my sister, my son, all died from cancer. My daughter died from immunosubstance effects. And my brother just rang the bell last week for his last treatments for his cancer, and he had to go for another treatment. So we're praying that he, with this last treatment, will be clear of cancer. We need help in the Mon Valley. We need help in those communities, those communities in particular that you hear when you wake up. Clarton, Portview, Liberty, Lincoln, Glassport. Close your doors. Your air is terrible. You can't breathe. Don't come out. We are the ones affected by this. And some time ago, five or six years ago, I was on city council. I resigned from city council. Our council came down and spoke with you guys at one particular time. And you did a good thing. You allowed us to have a supplementary program that said we were able to use the money in a certain way. Why that money stopped, I don't know. I want to say we're the city of prayer and we're praying that you will hear our cry and work with us and help us to have the things that we need in our community, which that money, if you have to divide it somehow, give the majority of the money to the people that it affects and let the other people come up with ideas to clean the air. We need help. Thank you very much.
Next up is Patrick Campbell.
Thank you for the opportunity to provide public comment. My name is Patrick Campbell. I'm the Executive Director of the Group Against Smog and Pollution, a nonprofit organization working to improve regional air quality since 1969. And today, I'm here to urge you to vote yes on Allegheny County Health Department's air quality permit fee schedule, expected to help buoy enforcement and compliance efforts. It is important to note that the updated fee schedule was approved nearly unanimously by the Board of Health and was subject to a public comment period where it received robust support from residents, nonprofits, elected officials, like the Allegheny County Controller. There are several emotional arguments that we could be making about the importance of equipping our air quality program with the necessary resources and staffing. But the decision I think you are making tonight is straightforward. ACHD has been delegated the authority to enforce federal and state laws and regulations regarding air pollution controls in Allegheny County, such as the Clean Air Act. And the Clean Air Act requires that ACHD have adequate funding and personnel to carry out its duties. As demonstrated at myriad meetings by Deputy Director Jeff Rabbinowitz, ACHD currently does not have adequate funding, as evidenced by an anticipated $1.8 million budget shortfall. The Clean Air Act is clear on who needs to pay. In fact, the law requires ACHD to charge Title V facilities fees that are sufficient to cover the cost of administering the program. And again, Mr. Rabbinowitz explained in detail at several meetings how those fees are currently not sufficient to fund the program. It's also become evident that the state and county funding streams are not sufficient to cover the costs of administering the non-Title V side of the air quality program. And we believe it's an entirely appropriate and common sense for ACHD to charge the polluting facilities, requiring the time and resources for our air quality program to actually pay for those, for that time and those resources. And you're going to hear this evening, you're likely going to hear plenty of balking from industry, which is fond of cherry picking percentages they hope will alarm you enough to make a knee-jerk reaction and vote no on a proposal that's already been approved by the Board of Health and the Court of Public Opinion. And let's be clear, a no vote tonight is a vote against public health. It's a vote against the dedicated women and men at the air quality program who work to monitor our air and enforce air pollution control laws. Please know that a no vote will be remembered by your constituents, who this week have dealt with another abysmal bout of air quality. Please do your part and vote yes for this proposal.
Next, next up is Lisa Graves-Marcucci.
Thank you. My name's Lisa Graves-Marcucci. I'm a lifelong resident of the Mon Valley, and I work for the Environmental Integrity Project, helping local fence line communities with permitting issues like we're here to talk about tonight. I've been before county council, and I'd like to reiterate my support and hopefully your support of the proposed increased fees for several reasons. First, companies applying for new or renewed Title V permits should be responsible for covering the costs of staff time to review those applications. These permits are very complex and can take 12 months or longer to review. Appropriate funds must be available to ACHD to ensure the air permits are written and enforced properly. Increased fees are essential to ensure that ACHD can hire and maintain staff members with the expertise in the Federal Clean Air Act, as that is the standard to which the Title V permits are held. Without federal Clean Air Act expertise, ACHD runs the risk of issuing illegal permits that end up being litigated because they are not in compliance with federal law. The air program, as you've heard, is on loan to us from the federal government, the United States Environmental Protection Agency. If ACHD cannot or will not meet the requirements of the Clean Air Act, and they're held back by not having the funds to appropriately do that, we could lose the privilege of having a county-based air program. And we've had that for decades. I don't think we want to lose that. The US EPA issued a significant report in 2018, making recommendations for improvements at the ACHD Title V air program. Chief among them was to, quote, "ensure collected permit fees are sufficient to fund the Title V program." I commend the Board of Health for moving the issue of fee increases forward to you. And for those who might claim that the Board of Health's vote to recommend the fee increases involved a, quote, "procedural error," I point out that problem is of the Air Advisory Committee's own making. They were having trouble meeting quorum. Increased fees are an essential first step to address the inadequacies the US EPA has recommended. And these particular fee increases should not be assimilated into the general budget discussion. These are separate from that, and they should be funded completely by the operators and the applicants of the Title V programs. I urge a positive vote in support of these because our health, especially the health of folks who live near these facilities, is on the line and the ACHD is the front line in helping us. We need to properly staff and fund that program. Thank you so much.
Next up is Natasha Washington.
Hello. My name is Natasha Washington. I am the Communications Manager for the Breathe Project. I am also an environmental justice advocate that lives in the Mon Valley and a Wilkinsburg Councilwoman. So I am here today to ask you all to vote yes on ratifying and increasing these permit fees, mainly because we have an epidemic issue, a mortality issue in our community, where 644 to 1,373 people are dying prematurely because of the air pollution that we have. And this is just for PM 2.5. This isn't including sulfur dioxide and hydrogen sulfide that is in the airs that people can smell. We have smell reports that come into our smell report PGH app, and 530 of them were bad air reports of people saying that they can smell industrial smells, that they could smell sulfur, they could smell rotten eggs. And we know what rotten eggs means, what it's in the air. And we've also had these recent cold orange days. We have been in the top 3% of cancer rates for industrial pollution. We have been more than two times the average for childhood asthma rates. And we are really letting down our community and their health. We have a Board of Health that said and approved all of our comments and our remarks to say that this is something that we should be moving forward with because it is an issue that we need to reduce. These permits are not in compliance. Our emission standards are above the standards that they need to be in. And I understand as a councilwoman how frustrating budgeting can be. But this should be a no-brainer when this is not taxpayer dollars, when this is EPA funding and permit fees that are paying for this program, that your health department actually needs to function to do these permits. We have backlog permits. We have permits that are not in compliance for our major polluters, our top major polluters, that are poisoning our communities and our nearby children, grandparents, parents, workers, and former workers that are union workers in this community that are dying of this pollution. I urge you all to do this because we can afford to do this and that we have entrusted in our health department, as well as our many professionals who have seen the health impacts of our community, who are dying from cancer every day, to deal with this issue so that we can have lower emissions. We are asking for you to invest into this facility to lower these emissions. I don't know why we're fighting against US still investing into their facility to make it better, but that's what we need to do to improve this. And that starts with making sure that we have a department and we have a program that is enforcing them properly so that they can be in compliance, so that we are not against the law.
We have been in the top 3% of cancer rates for industrial pollution. We have been more than two times the average for childhood asthma rates, and we are really letting down our community and their health. We have a Board of Health that said and approved all of our comments and our remarks to say that this is something that we should be moving forward with because it is an issue that we need to reduce. These permits are not in compliance, our emission standards are above the standards that they need to be in. And I understand, as a councilwoman, how frustrating budgeting can be, but this should be a no-brainer when this is not taxpayer dollars, when this is EPA funding and permit fees that are paying for this program, that your health department actually needs to function to do these permits. We have backlog permits. We have permits that are not in compliance for our major polluters, our top major polluters, that are poisoning our communities and our nearby children, grandparents, parents, workers, and former workers that are union workers in this community that are dying of this pollution. I urge you all to do this because we can afford to do this and that we have entrusted in our health department, as well as our many professionals who have seen the health impacts of our community, who are dying from cancer every day, to deal with this issue so that we can have lower emissions. We are asking for you to invest into this facility to lower these emissions. I don't know why we're fighting against US Steel investing into their facility to make it better, but that's what we need to do to improve this. And that starts with making sure that we have a department and we have a program that is enforcing them properly so that they can be in compliance, so that we are not against the law. Because as elected officials, we have to be in compliance with the law, more than we have to be in favor with the industries that are coming against us. We should be working for our polluted communities, our poisoned communities, and not the people that are polluting them. This is something that is hard for me to sleep at night and think about, all these community members dying. But I hope that you can urge it. Yeah, I heard you. You can urge it, and please vote yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. My name is Phoebe Shakaroff-Reese. I am an O'Hara Township resident, along with Ranger, the K-9, and on the leadership team of the Climate Reality Project Pittsburgh and Southwestern Pennsylvania Chapter, which has more than 600 members across the region, largely in Allegheny County. And I am here to urge you to please ratify the air quality permit application and permit fee increases approved by the Allegheny Health Department. We have a momentous opportunity before us. We have Dr. Julia Van, who's exceptionally talented and committed to our community's health. We need to fund her department to, so they can uphold the law, as you've heard before. The price of inaction is steep. You know, you might hear some balking that it costs $55,000 for these permits, but it's fair for polluters to pay for their own permit applications, rather than us pay for the permit applications and suffer the consequences of the backlog, which is being out of compliance with the law, and that's our lawsuits, along with the mortality study, as you heard, where we have, in Allegheny County, the death rate, the premature death rate as a result of air pollution, soot, is the equivalent of a 9/11 happening every two years. That's one and a half to four people per day in Allegheny County dying from air pollution. We need our health department. We can't do this on our own. And $55,000 is chump change for US Steel. They pay that monthly in fees. In the past four and a half years, since January 2020, the amount, can you guess, the amount of penalties, fees, settlement agreements for breaking the air laws in Allegheny County? They've paid $65 million just in fees. So let's do this in an organized way and have them be in compliance with the law, because our communities have suffered enough. It's disproportionately harming the Mon Valley, communities of color, low income. That's not fair. And this costs taxpayers zero. It costs us zero to pass this, to ratify this. Permits are critical for holding polluters to the laws. So please, we, the ACHD needs the funding so that it can provide the staffing and expertise to update the permits, to enforce violations of the Clean Air Act, and to protect the health of our county's residents. Please, thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll now move on to approval of minutes 13275-24.
It's a motion to approve the minutes of the September 24th, 2024 regular meeting of council.
So moved. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing, no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Did we have one more sign up?
No more on agenda items.
I signed up yesterday for public comment.
What's your name?
David Levdansky.
I signed up also.
Okay, we have no record of you. I'll let you speak under the non-agenda items.
Johnny Perryman.
Okay.
Mr. Perryman is on the list for non-agenda.
Want to speak now?
If you want to speak now, that's fine. Go ahead, Councilman Walton.
Mr. Perryman is scheduled on the non-agenda items. He's scheduled to speak.
Yeah, under non-agenda, on the non-agenda items, but since he got up and obviously, I just let him. Go ahead.
Okay. My name is Johnny Perryman. I'm from Clariton, Pennsylvania. I've been living in Pennsylvania for 16 years now, and I was told in 2005 by my doctor that I had to get out of Clariton or, you know, like, I'd be in real trouble. I didn't leave. I had a new heart pump put in me, and I got operated, medical equipment everywhere I go, but I work, I'm Vice President of VECAN, Valley for Clean Air Now. And what we've done is we passed out three air purifiers, over 1,000 air purifiers out. And these air, they say that 26% of the people that die of cancer is from air pollution. And so the air purifiers had to have saved some lives, actually saved lives. And what I would like to see us do is more things that will help people to live longer. Now, the air purifiers keep them healthy, breathe the good air while they're in the house, but I would like to see something that, where we can help their health when they're outside of the house, when they're outside of the house. I would like to see a co-op in Clariton. I would like to see a greenhouse growing the healthiest vegetables that you could possibly eat. I would like to stand out in front and pass out free smoothies for, this is for cancer, this is for heart, this is for whatever their problem is. Instead of just passing laws, do something. The first air purifier passed out, I took the money out of my pocket from my social security check, and I gave it to a woman who thought her child was going to die. Now, that one air purifier may have saved a life. And what I'm trying to say is I want to see us save more lives, and I want to see us to recognize organizations that are doing things that are exact, that are saving lives, and do whatever you can to help us out, whether there's a letter of support, if we're applying for grant somewhere, but whatever you can do to help us out, I would appreciate it. And I'm not going to take the last minute.
Thank you. Go ahead, come on up.
Thank you. My name's David Levdansky. I'm a lifelong resident of the Mon Valley. I'm joined tonight by Ed Andrick and Tim Bell, residents of Forward Township, where I presently serve as a Township Supervisor. It's tough to, maybe I'll just synthesize my remarks, given what everybody else has said about the air program in Allegheny County. Increasing fees will enable the Allegheny County Health Department Air Program to employ more staff with better expertise. That should result in Title V permits being written and issued in full compliance with the Clean Air Act. There's an old saying amongst lawmakers, "The law is only as good as it is enforced and administered." And you can't have good enforcement and administration unless you have a program that's properly funded. Secondly, permit fees are an essential component of the Allegheny County Health Department air program funding. Applicants pay the fees, not taxpayers. This is a fee to those who are involved and utilize and need the permits. This is not a 46% property tax proposal. This is a no-brainer. This is an easy vote. The Allegheny County Health Department air program is authorized by the EPA. It's not mandated. Essentially, the feds delegate to the states enforcement of the Clean Air Act, and DEP then further delegates it to the Allegheny County Health Department. It's worked that way for decades and decades. If Allegheny County doesn't operate it in conformance with EPA rules and regulations, it could, we could lose that authority, and I don't think that's something that we should want. I lived in the Mon Valley my entire life. People who live in the Mon Valley and workers who are employed by these major sources of pollution both need the protections from dangerous pollution. In my other life, in my early life, I worked in the labor movement as a special assistant to Lynn Williams, the then Secretary Treasurer of the Steelworkers Union. Lynn told me, when I asked him about this whole issue of environmental laws and how it affects the union members, he said, from his perspective, "The Clean Air Act works to complement OSHA worker safety and health." He said that when the Clean Air Act improves the environment and public health, it also protects worker health and safety. What's good for public health and safety, he said, is good for the United Steelworkers of America members and their health and safety. In the end, way back in the late '70s and early '80s, he taught me that you could be pro-worker and pro-environment. Takes a little bit of work, a little bit of explanation. In the end, this is the right thing to do for public health and for those people that work in these facilities as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll now move on. Everyone voted on this, so I believe this was approved. There were no dissensions on 13275 for the motion to approve the minutes?
Correct.
Thank you. 13269-24.
Approving the appointment of James R. Byrne Jr. to the Accountability, Conduct, and Ethics Commission for a term to commence on December 18th, 2024, and be effective through December 18th, 2029, sponsored by Councilmember Katina.
That will go to the Committee on Appointment Review. Unfinished business for the Committee on Appointment Review for the second reading, 13201-24.
Approving the appointment of Lorraine Burnett King to the Area Agency on Aging Advisory Council for a term effective through September 24th, 2028, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Councilmember Nakrati Chopkas.
President Katina, the Committee on Appointment Review met on October 16th, 2024, and affirmatively recommended this appointment. I'd like to make that motion.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Do we need a roll call on this, or is a voice vote fine? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Bill's numbers, 1322824 and 13229-24. After discussing with Councilmember Klein, I'm going to refer those back to the Committee on Health and Human Services for additional discussion at this point in time. Are there any liaison reports? Hearing, none. New business ordinances, resolutions, 13276-24.
An ordinance to the County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending and supplementing the Administrative Code of Allegheny County, Article 207, entitled "New Board of Property Assessment Appeals and Review," Section 5, 20704, entitled "Compliance with County Procedures," Section 5, 20706, entitled "Rules and Regulations for Appeals," and Section 5-20707, entitled "Powers and Duties in Order to Establish Uniform Lines of Communication and Chain of Command and to Streamline the Appeal Process Under the Same Umbrella of Responsibility," sponsored by Councilmember Macy.
That will go to the Committee on Assessment Practices, 13277-24.
An ordinance to the County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending and supplementing the Administrative Code of Allegheny County, Article 209, entitled "Office of Property Assessments," Section 5, 20904, entitled "Responsibilities of the Office of Property Assessment in Order to Establish Uniform Lines of Communication and Chain of Command and to Streamline the Appeal Process Under the Same Umbrella of Responsibility," also sponsored by Councilmember Macy.
That will go to the Committee on Assessment Practices as well. Any new business?
No motions, no.
Notification of contracts?
None.
We'll have public comment on general items now.
Mr. Perryman already spoke. That would bring up Ias Azuny.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ias Azuny. I live in Brookline. I want to talk about the budget meetings that are going to be held next week. Obviously, the county needs money, and everybody I spoke with also thinks that either a reassessment is due or an increase in taxes is due.
Thank you.
We can't run on Fitzgerald's 12 years of no increase of taxes or reassessment. So I do appreciate the move to do that. So, Mr. Palmosina, you represent me. I'd like you to vote for a sort of a tax increase or reassessment, something that will put money into the county's coffers, something that would let the sheriff office work. I was impressed last week with the PRT's presentation. I think they're doing a great job. They have great initiatives. And again, we need money for this. Again, it's fees-based, so maybe that's not going to be affected by a tax increase. However, I want everybody here to question the DA's office, how they've been wasting resources on persecuting pro-Palestine protesters. They've been wasting taxpayer money on prosecuting these guys, 19-year-olds, 18-year-olds, being charged with felonies. Why are we wasting money on that? Why? The sheriff's office needs, what, $1.5 million? And we're paying all these lawyers to suppress free speech? We shouldn't do that. Free speech is the First Amendment. The First Amendment. We can't use taxpayers' money to suppress free speech. We can take money from the DA's office, put it in the sheriff's office, put it in the PRT, put it wherever. They are wasting money. I encourage all of you to question them on that next week. I also would like to ask that the comments section of the budget meetings to be put at the front end of the meeting so that people can comment and the officials can hear the public on what our concerns are. I'd appreciate it, I'd appreciate it if you guys can move the schedule a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Chad Ringblum.
Good evening. My name's Chad Ringblum. I'm from Brentwood. I don't think that it's a coincidence that I'm here. This is divine providence with all of the life-saving and, you know, pleas for concerning, being your concern for life. So I'm just going to get into it. It's probably not what they agree with, but doesn't matter. I, initially, when we decided to start coming down to these meetings, we didn't know what we were going to, we didn't know what we were going to talk about, because we didn't feel like there was an opening, until the county executive chose to do an executive order protecting and promoting access to, quote, "reproductive health care." The term reproductive health care on its face is innocuous, but for what it has come to represent. No reasonable person would block access to something so vital as access to the very care that helps bring our offspring into the world. But for as long as I have been alive, reproductive health care has become synonymous with abortion. And now, in the definition of terms in this executive order includes many other, includes, among other things, hormone therapy and gender reassignment surgery. While I reject that the term reproductive health care is defined in the order because health care is something meant to preserve and protect life, it's not meant to harm permanently or even destroy life. But more importantly than my rejection of that term, God, the God who created and governs that universe and delegates authority to bodies such as this rejects that nonsense. The only person quoted who seemed in the article to so much as question this Councilman DeMarco was Councilman DeMarco, but rather than speak up, he questioned the relevance or logic for doing something that is really redundant. Sir, instead of boldly leading your constituents by speaking against the evil of abortion when given this platform and showing compassion on the roughly 7,000 victims who are slaughtered in Allegheny County every year, you questioned what it represents in a state where abortion is already legal. We're talking about the premeditated taking of an innocent human life with malice aforethought. That's murder. Abortion is murder. I come here to rebuke all of this council who sit quietly or even approve of this atrocity taking place in our county and nation, but I also encourage you, the same God who gives you authority through this body to reward good and punish evil will judge the living and the dead in righteousness, but he's also merciful. His grace is sufficient. He commands repentance and faith in Jesus Christ for peace with God and the forgiveness of sin. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Last up is Aaron Pratt.
Good evening. I'm Aaron Pratt, Elder of Redeemer Church of South Hills. Christ is King. Recently, an executive order was signed by the county to protect people seeking and providing abortions. The county executive was quoted as saying about the overturning of Roe versus Wade in 2022, that it was a wake-up call that our rights are not as permanent as many of us may have believed. Though abortion is viewed as care in the eyes of the county executive, it is not care. Abortion is murder, and no one has a right to murder anyone. The State of PA issued an order in 2022 protecting out-of-state residents who seek abortion services in PA. The city of Pittsburgh followed suit, making Pittsburgh a sanctuary The city of Pittsburgh followed suit, making Pittsburgh a sanctuary city for outsiders seeking to murder their preborn children. Allegheny County now joins the ranks of those who have issued iniquitous decrees in the face of almighty God. God will not be mocked. God declares all nations as his own. His justice will reign in all the earth. The state of Pennsylvania, the city of Pittsburgh, and Allegheny County unashamedly welcome child sacrifice. Nations have been destroyed for this, and this county is not exempt. Why would the county issue such a wicked decree? Because God's word is true. Those who hate God love death. Thousands of babies are slaughtered in this county each year. No doubt, this executive order was signed proactively to combat any national abortion ban established in the future. However, there is already a worldwide ban in place. It's called God's Law, and he says, "You shall not murder," Exodus 2013. Christ is king. His justice will be established in the land, for there will be no end to the increase of his government. He rules and reigns, and every square inch of all nations will be taken captive to Christ. When those in authority issue iniquitous decrees, they shake their fists in the face of holy God in an attempt to subvert his authority. God laughs. Psalm 2 reads, "Why do the nations rage and peoples plot in vain? The kings of the earth set themselves, and the rulers take counsel together against the Lord and against his anointed, saying, 'Let us burst their bonds apart and cast away their courts from us.' He who sits in the heavens laughs. The Lord holds them in derision. Then he will speak to them in his wrath and terrify them in his fury, saying, 'As for me, I have set my king on Zion, my holy hill. I will tell of the decree. The Lord said to me, 'You are my son. Today I have begotten you. Ask of me, and I will make the nations your heritage and the ends of the earth your possession. You shall break them with a rod of iron and dash them in pieces like a potter's vessel. Now therefore, O kings, be wise. Be warned, O rulers of the earth. Serve the Lord with fear. Rejoice the Lord with trembling. Kiss the sun, lest he be angry, and you perish in the way. Blessed are all who take refuge in him. Repent of your sin.'"
Is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you.